Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thursday, October 23rd, County Commissioners Open Session. And as we, oh, before, before, as we start the meeting, I know a lot of here are public comment, and I see a lot of you have filled out cards. If you want to do public comment, fill out the card, put it at our desk. And if it's for an agenda item, you'll be called during that agenda. If it's general, it'll be at the end of the meeting. But thank you all for coming. And as we like to do, we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Our pledge allegiance is to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're deviating a little bit from the normal agenda. We'd like to start with the courthouse security funding and acceptance of award for a grant.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Commissioners, nice to see you. Thanks for including me on the agenda today. I come here on behalf of the Circuit Court for Carroll County and all of its employees and citizens and users of the Circuit Court to request your approval of a grant that we applied for and received from the Administrative Office of the Courts to improve security at the courthouse without getting into any detail that might compromise our already existing security. This will help enhance security through improved surveillance camera coverage in the courthouse. The grant that we applied for and received from the Administrative Office of the Courts is $64,669.1, and no county funds are being requested of you. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have about.
I miss Secretary Rosting, but he would compliment you on zero county funds.
Always nice to come before you when I'm not asking for any additional funds. I appreciate the difficult decisions you have to make about finances.
I move the Board of Commissioners approve the submission of the AY 2025 courthouse security funding request of $64,669.1 and accept the award.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good afternoon.
You too.
See you later, Judge.
Okay. Priority Carroll, and I was in Savannah last week, and I'd hear...
I guess I don't remember exactly who goes, but I just have a quick public service announcement.
Go ahead.
So that's all I've got. It's just, until we get the time changes, I just want to remind everybody to be careful out there driving. The school buses and the kids are out in the dark in the mornings. So just a quick public service announcement for everybody to slow down a little bit and be cognizant of the fact that those kids are running around, and chances are they're not really paying attention if they're crossing the street or doing something like that. So just, just be safe, everybody. That's, that's all I really wanted to convey to folks this morning, and that's all for me.
Thank you. I want to mention a couple things from this past week. Last Thursday, attended the Care Healing Center Lighting the Way for Survivors vigil. Very impressive and touching event. I definitely would suggest for anybody to potentially attend future events when they do another vigil. Clearly something that is, something that maybe goes unnoticed at times in the community, but is something we should all be paying attention to. Also, on Tuesday, myself and a number of my colleagues attended the annual Carroll County Chamber Breakfast, annual meeting with Arban Basu. Got to hear some very interesting insight on the future economy. Not sure exactly where we're headed, but I guess we'll all find out jointly and together. Also on Tuesday...
Commissioner Gordon, I forgot, smack me, I have his slideshow. I will flip it to everybody here.
If you could, that'd be great.
Because I always like looking at that afterwards. Sorry.
No, no, absolutely. And then I had a slightly busy Tuesday, was then at planning and zoning, then attended the Veterans Advisory Council with Commissioner Kyler, and then rounded out the end of the day at the Community College for the turf field groundbreaking. Also attended the Carol Lutheran Village 45th Anniversary event yesterday, and also attended last night the Carroll County Women's Conference Second Act, which was a follow-up to last Friday's event they held at the Community College. I will say this, I had the pleasure of attending that event last night, but also was there at, they go back and forth each year between McDaniel and the Community College, and I will say that it's an exceptional event for anybody in the community and all the women, definitely something to look into, check out, and be a part of, because we have an exceptional number of women in this community, be they elected educators, business owners, nonprofit executive directors, and can't say enough about the wonderful things that come from the female population in Carroll County. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said, Commissioner. So in the interest of time, the agenda, and I know we have this public hearing ahead of us, I'm going to forego my priority Carroll for this week and pass it over to Sue.
Thank you. And I'm going to try to do the same, some of the events that I've attended have already been covered. But one thing I did the other day was attended a Republican Carroll, Carroll Republican Connection group, and they always have good speakers, and I happen to be the speaker. But one of the things we're doing as Commissioners here is trying to enhance our transparency and communication with the citizens. And I meant, I had some brochures to hand out to them. Hopefully, we're going to have a communications policy that will follow it. But for all of you who want to know what's going on, and many of you probably already do, on the front of our website, at the very bottom, you scroll all the way down, and there's something called Carroll Connect. And you click on there, and there's a whole list of things you can connect to. And we're going to make that a little more robust even to some other items. But, you know, some things are being well done, and some things we need to improve. But you can get all the Commissioner agendas the week ahead of time on Friday. Friday is the date for the following week that it's confirmed. Sometimes you put out two weeks ahead for informational purposes, the time could change, but a week ahead it's confirmed. And then that following week, the Commissioners put out the minutes, with the minutes are all the proceedings that are here. And you can click on each agenda item and actually watch the conversation of that agenda item. So if you have nothing else to do at night, and you want to just hang out and watch the Commissioners talk, but it gives you an idea what's coming up on the agenda. And then has information about boards and commissions, if you're interested. We're trying to get that up to date, you know, what the requirements are for the boards and commissions, you know, what the, what the openings are, what their purpose is. So it's been there, but we're trying to make sure it's up to date, and people can look at it to get good information. And also, if you, at the bottom, I forget what it's called, right under Carroll Connect, it's something else that you can report a problem in your community. Let's say you see a pothole, or you see a tree down, it's called the click report.
See click report.
See, it's right under, again, you scroll all the way to the bottom, it's a big little thing that says Carroll Connect, I mean...
See click report.
See click report, and you can click on that and just report something real quick. You know, you saw something that needs to be taken care of, you're driving, you can just do it on your phone. So there's a lot on the website, and we're trying to make sure it is up to date. It is the place you go for information, the most up to date, and it's got how to get to different people and the, and staff and just, and we're trying to make it easy to navigate. If you have any suggestions to how to make it easier to navigate, like the presentations that we have here, you mentioned Anabam Basu, we do a lot of great presentations, presentations here, and you see them on the screen, but you necessarily can't easily upload them. We're going to try to make sure they're easily uploaded right the next day or that day, so you can see them, read them, whatever you want. So please take advantage of that, it's a great way of communication, and you've got to sign up and positively check off and say, these are the things I want to get. Like, I want to get information from the senior center. Pick your senior center and check it off. You might not want them all. Wreckin' Parks, and they do a very good job of pushing this information out there. You don't have to go to the website, it will push their latest information. So I'm going to try to keep talking about the ability to try to communicate better and give people better information timely. And if you want to reach all of us, there's, probably said this before, but commissioners at carrollcountymd.gov, it reaches all five of us with one address, and Chief of Staff and the Deputy and Budget Director, so everybody can see. And if you want to reach one person, you just go on one person's, if they're in your district, and you want response from one person. You might not get a response from all five of us, because it's a lot to answer everybody's district, but at least we're all seeing what your comments are, and we're trying to make it as easy as possible to communicate. So take advantage of it. Our community is great because of the people that participate, and we want to continue to make that more available. That's it.
Thank you. Two quick things, I won't repeat some of the things mentioned. Carroll Community College had the groundbreaking for their turf field, which is an awesome project and expansion of Carroll Community College. And Carol Lutheran celebrated their 45th year, and you were there for the ceremony, I was there for some snacks afterwards, but just a great group over there and a great, a great community for Carroll County. Two personal notes, but I'll spin it into general. I spent Sunday afternoon in a celebration of life for a 60-year-old friend, talked to his mom, his two brothers, his sister, and many, many, many friends. I worked indirectly with him and knew him through church. I lost one of our wrestlers within the last two weeks. He's 46 years old, Philadelphia policeman, disability, retirement, and that, that celebration of life's mid-November. But I, I don't want to mention either names, but I just want to mention, there are warning signs, we all think about them after the fact, but it's, it's tough. It's tough out there, and we really need to focus on people and how they feel. And it's, and particularly the policeman, he had some issues on the job that I think contributed to losing him this early. And I respect so much what they do for us, but it's, it's not without its price, and thank you. So on a nicer moment, Commissioner is going to chair a proclamation with us.
I have a proclamation for Economic Development Week, and Denise, if you want to come down and bring anybody you want with you. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation and then kick things over to you.
Okay.
So this is a proclamation for Economic Development Week from October 20th, 2025 to October 24th, 2025. Whereas Carroll County economic development promotes business attraction, retention, and expansion, including agriculture, small business startups, tourism, and workforce development for our businesses and citizens. And whereas economic development leads to job creation, increased tax revenue, improved infrastructure, and adds to the quality of life in our communities. And whereas the county values the many businesses that call Carroll home, along with over 96,000 workers that contribute to our local and regional economies, and celebrates a diverse and stable business space, including a growing agricultural sector, health industries, construction trades, information and technology firms, and thriving manufacturers that produce food, aerospace, wood, mechanical, and defense products. And whereas, we celebrate Carroll County economic development success, including $134 million of commercial and industrial investment and expansion construction of 191,000 square feet. And whereas Carroll County continually works with developers and property owners to showcase and develop additional commercial and industrial property investment, with an expected land development investment of $533 million and an additional 2.1 million square feet of commercial industrial space. And whereas the county brings together town, education, and community stakeholders to advance and celebrate business success and community growth. And whereas Carroll County economic development is an active member of the Maryland Economic Development Association, or MEETA, a nonprofit organization established in 1961 whose mission is to enhance the knowledge and skills of its members, encourage partnerships and networking among people committed to bringing jobs and capital to Maryland, and to promote economic development as an investment in Maryland. And whereas MEETA members promote statewide economic well-being by working to improve Maryland's business climate and the professionalism of those in the field of economic development, including other professionals with a direct interest in the economy of Maryland, through its regular educational meetings, special programs, and community-driven projects. And whereas the economic growth and stability of Maryland affects all regions and jurisdictions of the state, and Carroll County is an important component of the state's economic success. Now therefore, we, the Board of Carroll County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 20th, 2025 through October 24th, 2025 as Economic Development Week in Carroll County, Maryland, and ask all to join us in recognizing and reaffirming the importance of business development locally and statewide during the celebration. Adopted this 23rd day of October 2025, signed all five Commissioners. Denise, all yours.
Thank you. That was a lot, and I appreciate you going through all of that, because there is a lot of work that's, that's done every day to advance the local economy. And we were very excited to celebrate Economic Development Week this week. Each year, well, the last three years, we've been focusing on outreach and visiting a certain sector of our economy. The first year, we went to all of the main streets in the, in the county and had teams that went out to thank the small business owners that are on our main streets. Last year, we ended up going out to some agricultural enterprises, and I think some of you are joining us on those visits, and, and that's always a lot of fun. I think that's the best part of the job, when we get to get out and, and talk with the businesses. So this year, we chose to visit our Carroll County pillars. And those are pillars that we talk about that are longstanding institutions in Carroll County that are a very important part of our economy. And we talk about them when we go to the bond rating agency meetings in New York City, and we're going next week again on Tuesday and Wednesday. And pillars are longstanding institutions, they've started here and they continue to grow here. They add strength and stability to our economy, they add tax revenue to the tax base, they add really good jobs, and they add to the quality of life here in Carroll County with their community investments. We are visiting 20 pillars that we have identified. We've given them a certificate of appreciation, and that's signed by each of you. So that basically says, you know, we really appreciate all of their work in the local economy. And we've given them, because it's a pillar award, we gave them this beautiful pillar recognition award that also celebrates, you know, Economic Development Week, and again thanks them for their investment in the community. The companies that we've visited so far, we still have some to go tomorrow, and then actually some got pushed out and are scheduled next week. They've all been very humbled and very grateful for the recognition that we're bestowing upon them. I'd like to publicly thank our team that put together this endeavor, I guess, and all of these visits. Alisa Gaffert, Gaffert, who happens to have a birthday today, uh-oh.
Oh, happy birthday.
And Chris Weinbrunner, along with all of the other team members that have gone out with us to visit these companies, because we have a very good working relationship with these institutions and these companies. We know them, we know their staff, we know their people, we know their trials and tribulations and, and all of that. So we're very helpful to, to be there, to talk to them. And basically, this week is all about thanking them, you know, and of course, listening if they have any concerns, but it's really about thanking them for their community contributions. Also, this week on Tuesday, as Commissioner Gordon mentioned, the chamber had their annual meeting, and we were a diamond partner in that event, and I had the opportunity and the privilege to introduce Anibam Basu, and he gave a great economic outlook. So that was wonderful. And also Paige represented the department this week in the TEDCO Entrepreneurial Expo that was at the University of Maryland College Park. And our regional partnerships are really important to economic development as well. So we're out in the region and working with the state. So we're issuing a press release today, we will be putting the proclamation on our website, we're going to post lots of the photos that we have with the visits that are there, and that's at carolbiz.org. And we're also sharing the events with the Maryland Economic Development Association. So we will get some statewide recognition for the efforts and, and for our companies, really, because that's what it's all about. So thank you for the proclamation, thank you for supporting economic development and the activities that, that we do.
And thank you for everything that you do for us as well. I mean, it, you know, these businesses, the other thing I think it's important to talk about those pillars is they're not just businesses, they're, they're integrated members of communities.
Yes.
They employ local people, and they donate and they contribute to local communities as well.
Right.
And so our ability to be able to honor them, not just for being in business, for being active parts of the community, is incredibly important. So thank you for that.
You're welcome, yeah. It, it's a great, a great effort, and it's really very rewarding to do that and to see, to see the impact that they really do have every day on the community.
And thank you for everything the department does. And I've got to ask, you have two partners with you, is there anything she didn't cover?
Did she say how great we are? I think Commissioner Vigliotti certainly did.
I think I said that, didn't I say that?
Thank you, thank you for your support. We appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, we really do. It, it's, it's been wonderful. And obviously, you know, with the Workforce Center, I mean, that's so important. Tourism, very important. Carroll County Farm Museum, you know, we, we touch a lot of areas of the county government, and, and as I said, we have a lot of deep connections with these institutions and with these companies. So they know us.
Thank you.
I appreciate all the hard work and dedication from everybody, not only just with economic development, tourism, as you mentioned, the Farm Museum, workforce. development, tourism, as you mentioned, the Farm Museum, workforce. Um, I think to Commissioner Vigliotti's point, it's really foundational when you really consider, they're not only jobs or businesses, but it's community. And a lot of those businesses, be it the ones you're visiting, or the ones we visited with you the previous year, or any of the other businesses, they're the people that help fund a lot of things in our communities, the nonprofits, the events, uh, things for kids. So, you know, I think anytime we can show our support and appreciation, it's definitely something we should do. So thank you very much.
Well, it was interesting, we had, and Stan can speak to this, but we, um, with workforce development, you know, we brought team members in that are integrated in with Carroll County Public Schools, and, and that was an interesting topic of conversation. So Blueprint.
It, it's inspiring, um, to have our legacy businesses and listen to their stories about why they're here. And we talk to them often about the next generational workforce, and they're in our public schools now. So training them up, developing them, and deploying them into their businesses and staying within our community just continues to enrich what we have here in Carroll County. Um, so I, I think that's the real value. Blueprint tends to sometimes get a, a bad rap, but we do a lot of great things in our public school systems to really educate, elevate, and develop our kids to be ready for, for tomorrow.
And also internship possibilities. Sometimes companies don't think about it, but just having a real job, the real paycheck over the summer to fill in for things, it just gets them into a real workplace and understanding what a paycheck is. So I think if we expand on that internship program, it would be phenomenal. Some don't, maybe don't know about it. Just even in, one I missed this weekend, I would like to ask, I missed Monday morning of Ottenberg Bakery and Springfield Hospital. I smell Ottenberg Bakery every time I come out of my house, because I can, it's right there. I would like to do that myself, if you would give me the contact. And Springfield, I haven't been through that campus since before COVID. I'd like to see, uh, have the same contact, and then I will be joining you next week on your tour, on the ones that I can do. I think I've hit yes.
Oh, okay.
But thank you, but I would like to make those two up. I had a conflict.
Yeah, we definitely will. I was pleasantly surprised, Ryan Patarakis, fourth-generation owner of H&amp;S Bakeries, was at the facility when we were there. So that was a surprise, and it was really nice to meet him and, um, talk to him, um, about their history and, and yeah, on our website, we are sharing a little brief history of each of the pillars, um, along with the photos that we took for, for when we went to the visit. So, um, it's, it's, it's impressive. So I'll certainly get you those contacts.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, how many you got here for a photo?
Oh, we had a bunch, yeah.
Bring them all up.
Eight, eight or so, 10 maybe.
Did you get samples at H&amp;S?
What's that?
Did you get samples at H&amp;S?
Oh, no, we did not, actually.
Hey, good comments.
They still let you in here?
Number six, I think. Yeah, number six. This is the first, they're starting priority.
One more.
I prefer you not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you so much.
See you again next week.
I loved it.
That was a great trip, and sometime we need to do a thing on what we get out of that organization. Because I don't think people realize it.
Thank you. Sorry I missed, it was first thing in the morning.
Keep going down straight, that's a job.
Chief Muster.
Anything's required.
Commissioner Gordon's going to share with us, and there's a typo.
Yes, I caught that.
In the program, it's actually the 40th anniversary.
Yes. I've got that covered, but thank you for pointing that out. Um, wanted to see if, uh, the, uh, Director of Citizen Services and anyone else wanted to come up to the, the front?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good afternoon, you're right.
How are you, Celine?
Not adjusted to the new schedule. I'm good, how are you folks?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Doing well. So we have a proclamation here that's celebrating 40 years of housing assistance programs. Whereas for the past 40 years, Carroll County Housing and Community Development has provided critical support to individuals and families in Carroll County, ensuring access to safe, stable, and affordable housing. And these programs have empowered communities by reducing homelessness, fostering economic stability, and improving the quality of life for countless households. And the collaboration between federal, state, and local governments, along with nonprofit organizations and community advocates, has been instrumental in the success and evolution of these programs. And we recognize the ongoing need to address housing challenges, adapt to changing circumstances, and expand access to affordable housing for future generations. And as we commemorate the 40th anniversary of Carroll County Housing and Community Development, we honor its positive impact on our community and reaffirm our commitment to ensuring housing security for all. Now therefore, we, the Board of Carroll County Commissioners, do hereby celebrate this milestone, pledging to continue building a future where everyone has a place to call home. Adopted this 23rd day of October, 2025, signed, the Board of Carroll County Commissioners.
Thank you very much for, for providing us with this celebration of our 40th anniversary of our public, public housing authority. Um, you know, this is really a great celebration. It's been 40 years of providing resources and access to safe, stable housing and continuing to strive to end homelessness in Carroll County. So this, this public housing authority designation and the services that we provide with our housing subsidies is so important. And as you can imagine, over the 40-year time period, things have changed. So in 1985, uh, we were awarded 25 Housing Choice vouchers. Um, what that means and what that may look like and, and the difference in where we are today, is today we have 796 Housing Choice vouchers that we administer to help support people in affordable, safe, um, and accessible housing in Carroll County. Um, over that time, we have also grown, um, in, um, our staff, obviously, to help support those, um, vouchers. But with those, we've also changed the types of vouchers, because as the program grew, they recognized that we needed to prioritize certain individuals or populations to help support those most in need. So those, we now have non, uh, non-elderly disabled vouchers, we have HUD-VAS vouchers that support our veterans, along with case management. We also have Family Unification Program vouchers, and we also have mainstream vouchers. Um, and we offer a lot of different services throughout the, the programs with our housing. Um, one of the other things I want to recognize, uh, is that we've had a lot of different staffing changes over the 40 years. You've recognized recently some of our longer-tenured staff who have retired, uh, and now we welcome a lot of newer members that we decided we wanted to bring with us today to help us celebrate this, this monumental anniversary. Um, but instrumental in everything that we do, and these are longer-tenured employees in our housing program, is Danielle Yates. She is our Division Manager for Housing, and Paul Moffett, our Manager. Um, and I wanted to, I don't know if you want to stand up, folks, recognize our, our housing staff that are here today. We have Jerry Harris, if you want to stand up and give a wave and remain standing. Um, Beverly Lambert. We have Amanda Robinson, Katie Beard, Rebecca Bowles, Elizabeth Wilson, and Kaitlin Buckley. All right, so a big thank you goes to them for all the work that they do to support our community. And Danielle, I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to share, but you and Paul are rock stars together and constantly strategizing to make sure that if we can't meet a need in one location or one piece of our puzzle, you find a way to, to access another resource. So, great.
So I think the work we do with our community, um, just helps a lot. You know, we work very well with a lot of the groups that we have to make sure that we're ending homelessness, and for those folks who are in housing, they remain housed as well. Um, the dedication and the support that our staff give is amazing. Um, I can't ask for a better group. The teamwork is just wonderful, and we're just very happy to be able to serve our community and the individuals that we help every day.
And one other piece, just wanted to recognize, and we'll give you each a magnet, so you have it. We are rebranding, and so we are now the Division of Housing. So, and this has our phone number on it as well, so you can put this on your refrigerators when you get calls at home, to then refer them right to us. So, um, happy to, to provide those as we come up for the picture, so. Division of Housing and Community Connections.
Thank you. And, uh, and I appreciate all you do, and, uh, you're aware that I'm aware, some of it's very challenging, and, uh, you guys have more patience than I would, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll echo the words of my colleagues up here. You know, thank you very much for what you do, and I know it isn't just with housing. There are so many different services that Citizen Services does provide, uh, as well as all of our nonprofits and all of these entities that do good in the community. And I, I, you know, a large part of it is, is helping to coordinate those things as well. And, uh, I wanted to ask real quick, I mean, um, with the Governor's Enough Act, and I know we're going to be presenting on that in, in the next couple of weeks, um, the housing vouchers, um, do, do they have any impact or any influence? Is there any coordination between the Enough Act and this that could, could be constructed?
I think that specifically, that they are part of our continuum of services, that people, that when we're, when we're looking at the Enough Act and some of the initiatives, they may be correlating with that, and it'd be a resource we would provide. And then also, we have our Rapid Rehousing Program. Um, we also earmark some of our Housing Choice vouchers as move-on strategy vouchers for people that are in rapid rehousing or perm-supportive housing projects, um, so that they can move on into a less, a lower level of support into a Housing Choice voucher subsidy, and then eventually, hopefully become self-sustainable if they're able to earn income and, and move off of, of that. And we'll talk about a program, um, later on the agenda, where we do, um, a direct support with our Family Self-Sufficiency Program to enhance people's abilities to move off of voucher support.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Just want to mention real quickly, um, obviously, we're coming up on almost half
a century of this, another 10 years, which is impressive. It's also kind of, I guess, unfortunate in a strange way that we're having to, uh, have this sort of a, uh, program, but I think it's an absolutely exceptional program. And, you know, foundationally, uh, you all helping ensure the access to safe and stable and affordable housing affects so many things. It's, you know, it's, it's truly foundational when it comes down to an individual or family's life. It affects not only the, the adults, the children, and it affects the community as a whole. So I just want to thank you very much for all your involvement with that.
Yeah, I want to thank you as well. We get our share of, you know, phone calls and emails sometimes from citizens who just need a hand, and every time I reach out to you and your staff, you're always willing to reach out to that individual quickly, and I appreciate that. That makes a big difference. So, thank you.
Okay. Um, you've got a big group too, right? So we probably ought to stay up here and bring them up.
It depends on where you move, depending on how tall people are.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Celine. Thank you.
Hi Denise.
Yes, you may be moved, yeah.
You want to go over to this side?
Sure.
Yeah.
Two speed. So I'll still wait until you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to send.
Okay, um, now, uh, the Sheriff Department's going to talk about, um, an MAT Coordinator position. Um, before, if you want, I have a, I have one comment card for that.
For that item.
Do you want to?
Right? Yes, please.
Do that first, so.
So come on up and sit down and.
Mr. Josh Weilhite, if you go to the con, the microphone and make your comments. Chris, we'll need three minutes. Yep, thanks.
Are we good?
If you're ready.
Yeah, okay. Um, Commissioners, I stand before you today to speak plainly about consistency, fairness, and long-term consequences of how we choose to spend county dollars. These are not abstract ideas. These, they shape the trust in this board and the future of Carroll County. A brief history lesson before I get to my point. In March of 2025, before the waiver for the Blueprint mandate was granted, Carroll County Public Schools were facing the possibility of firing 92 teachers without the additional funding or waiver. This was not a hypothetical scenario, it was a looming reality. Our schools were staring down significant shortfalls that would have had direct impact in classrooms, programs, and most importantly, the students and youth of Carroll County. During the same period, as the county discussed the on-assigned fund balance rolling into the FY '26 budget, the County Budget Director Ted Zalinski said in the Carroll County Times on March 18th, that people who are advocating to use this money to fund the school's requests are missing the basic problem. This is one-time money. We spend it once, and it's gone. Commissioner Kyler reinforced that point also in the March 18th Carroll County Times article stating that this money is not a savings account, but instead, it is one-time money, and that it would be fiscally irresponsible to allocate it to the school system because it would be using one-time funds to cover recurring costs. After much contention, only the bare minimum was provided to the schools, using the justification of one-time money as the most prevalent reason. This firmly established the fiscal standard of not using one-time money for any recurring cost. However, just recently, the Carroll County Times reported on October 20th that Sheriff Jim, Jim DeWes plans to ask the Commissioners to use an opioid settlement money, which is one-time money, to create a medically assisted treatment coordinator position, estimated at about $46,000 a year. This position, from all intentions, would be permanent. Supporting recovery and public safety is important, but approving a permanent position with one-time dollars contradicts the very principle that guided your decision in the spring. If the same rules do not apply evenly across our county and community partners, we cannot credibly claim fiscal responsibility. If this position is approved using this one-time money, it will set a precedent that will not be forgotten. It will signal that fiscal restraints only apply selectively to different community partners, that some departments are bound by caution while others are granted exceptions. Consistency builds trust. Fairness earns respect, and transparency ensures that every corner of our government, our schools, our deputy, our families, and our youth are treated in the same integrity when it comes to spending public money. We should not be spending one-time money for recurring costs, according to you and your words. I yield my time back.
Thank you. And, uh, and hopefully you guys will address the funding that, that funds this position. And if it's one-time money, I know I'll vote against it, but.
So let me just, um, start with a little background. Um, the, uh, in 2023, the county convened a work group to discuss how we would use our opioid settlement money. This is money that is being awarded to the county, um, over many years. These are the settlements with the manufacturers and distributors of opioids. Um, right now, we will get over the next 17, over 17 years, about $15 million. The money is very restricted in what we can use it for. Um, so we convened a work group about how we would use it. We have to use it for opioid-related treatment, the only use of the money. Um, we surveyed community partners, we worked with the Senior Opioid Policy Group, I think they have a new name now, but that was the name back then when I was working with them, and Citizen Services was also heavily involved, um, to prioritize the programs for funding. MAT, or Medically Assisted Treatment, within the Detention Center rose to the top for a couple of reasons. It is very, a controlled environment. We could, we knew that it would be spent for the purpose that we could spend this money for. And it is a state mandate that we run MAT in our detention center. So that was the pri, the, the, the top priority of the community group. And as a part of that, we are also required to provide services, counseling services, group counseling, and a, a warm handoff when our inmates are released from detention if they are in the MAT program. So that was the second priority of the group. Um, we came to the Board of Commissioners in December of '23. The Board approved those two top priorities, and, um, and then we submitted our state, our plan to the state, and they also approved it. So MAT and the detention center, that's just a little background about how we came to fund this with this money, and then I'll turn it over. So I will also say that as a part of that plan, the Coordinator position was always part of the plan. Um, it was part of our state plan, and it was part of, um, the plan that the Board saw, but now we're actually, we, the sheriff is hiring, so we're asking for permission. and Citizen Services was also heavily involved, to prioritize the programs for funding. MAT, or medically assisted treatment within the detention center, rose to the top for a couple of reasons. It is very, a controlled environment. We could, we knew that it would be spent for the purpose that we could spend this money for. And it is a state mandate that we run MAT in our detention center. So that was the pri, the top priority of the community group. And as a part of that, we are also required to provide services, counseling services, group counseling, and a warm handoff when our inmates are released from detention if they are in the MAT program. So that was the second priority of the group. We came to the Board of Commissioners in December of '23. The board approved those two top priorities. And then we submitted our state, our plan to the state and they also approved it. So MAT and the detention center, that's just a little background about how we came to fund this with this money and then I'll turn it over. So I will also say that as a part of that plan, the coordinator position was always part of the plan. It was part of our state plan and it was part of the plan that the board saw. But now we're actually, we, the sheriff is hiring, so we're asking for permission to add it. So I will turn it over to Ms. McDonald. I don't think I introduced myself either. I got all discombobulated. Debbie Stanford, Grants Office with the county, and I'll let you guys introduce yourselves. Sorry.
Vicki McDonald, Director of Administrative Services with the sheriff's office. And I also have Captain Troy Stower, captain in the Corrections Bureau that oversees the whole MAT program.
Good afternoon.
Deviate slightly, since we went right to that. Part of our presentation today was twofold, so Debbie's given you some of the background. We were also giving you a high overview of an update of kind of where we were since the program started. So I can certainly do that, but I feel like I'm gonna switch up and address, kind of segue off of what Debbie talked about with that. So she is correct when we worked through the initial budgets. 2019, House Bill 116 basically mandated that we put a medication-assisted treatment program for incarcerated individuals, which means including medication in combination with counseling and behavioral health therapies to provide a holistic approach to the treatment of opioid use disorder. And the law required that the detention center needs to have the program in place by January of '23. We started the program in '23. Back in 2022, we spent a lot of time planning, obtaining funding, conducting all the planning, working on policies, identifying space in the facility, identifying the vendors and partners that we needed for the program, basically procuring all the equipment, supplies, getting it all set up, ready to go for January. The program did start in the detention center in January '23. At that point, a lot of, all of the funding was provided through various grants at the state level. This funding was not part of it. Immediately once the program started, we saw the numbers increasing to the participation. If discussions were back, you know, in 2020, 2019, that there wouldn't be that many participants, well, let me tell you, it is, it is very different than what the initial idea or thoughts were back when this first started. So as those numbers started to increase, we already had started talking about what do we do long-term? It's mandated, it's an unfunded mandate by the state that we have to do it. So we already were talking about what are we going to do? These grants and, you know, are grants going to continue, et cetera? So there were already discussions. At that point, later in 2023, as the work group started, we were pulled in. We started working on budgets for the long-term. Where do we think this was going to go? With it being a new program and with the numbers fluctuating on a daily basis. As W basically alluded to, in December of 2023, there was a list of priorities. The board at that time did basically go through and select the priorities. That funding actually started this past July, July of 2024. So we just finished our first fiscal year, basically with switching funding from grants over to the opioid restitution funding that was available. And that was the decision made about almost two years ago. Where we are with information, the program runs seven days a week, 365 days a year. The numbers changed drastically, but I can tell you over the last fiscal year, we had approximately 300 incarcerated individuals move through the program. And what that means is they didn't all start on day one, they weren't all there every day, but they came in, they started, they stopped, they may have been in treatment programs outside of the facility, came back in. But huge number of participants that went through. The actual numbers, as I mentioned, fluctuate daily. We've had as many as 90 participating in a day. The end of June, when we looked at our statistics that we had a report on last, we had approximately 75 individuals, but it goes up and down every day. The program is very labor-intensive, requires a lot of resources. The average daily population in our jail has increased dramatically over the past year, year and a half. So when you look at those trends, then naturally you tend to think those people that need the program will also kind of follow that trend. But like I said, it does vary. When we first looked at the program, what was involved, there were several categories. Basically, we needed expenses, the biggest one is nursing care. You need dedicated nursing from our medical service providers, that they are just working with the MAT program every day. So we have positions for that. There are specific medications, you need to partner with specific vendors to provide those types of services, dedicated space, equipment, specific policies and procedures. It also takes a lot of staff to basically move incarcerated individuals through the facility. They also meet for counseling sessions in the detention center. So you have a ton of activity going in, six, seven, eight hours a day, every day. It all depends on what the needs are. The reporting with this is immense. When we first started, we had no idea what this was going to look like. You had no idea how many participants, what kind of legs were going to be grown, et cetera. So at the time, we knew we would need some sort of coordinator. There's probably at least five different people that actually tackle all these different pieces all the time to keep what we need to. There's state mandated, state mandated reporting, not only for the opioid restitution funding, but also that the detention center is responsible for. That just touches the surface on all the documentation and all the paperwork. So as I said, with the funding that was decided on starting in July of 2024, we started looking to post for the position. All along, we were planning on a part-time position. We struggled and were not able to hire and fill the position. We posted at least three or four times and we're not able to get candidates to basically fill the position that we needed. So as we got to the end of the second year of the program, keep in mind, we had all of these people in the program, all of the responsibilities and resources that take a drastic amount of time. We sat down and evaluated the position with the numbers increasing and we were able to determine that we really need to make the position full-time. So we went ahead and switched. We've always anticipated that position. The other thing I will mention is when we first started, about a year and a half ago, with switching to this funding source, I did send in what I needed to budget, but I will apologize officially to budget because I did not update paperwork that I needed to, but made them aware. Been working with the Grants Office and the Budget Office ever since, like, what do we do? As well as all of the funding. But keep in mind, this program is, there's no sunset for it. There's no, there's no mandate for it to end. It's going to continue to grow. It's, it's in law that we have to provide these services. And so that is why we're like, we really need to have someone. So we knew that initially, we did not know exactly what it was going to look like because the entire program was new. So when we looked at the long-term funding and the short-term funding, it was always going to be included. We're before you now because we're finally at a point, almost three years into the program, that we've been able to actually find a qualified candidate for the position. So that's why unfortunately it is now and not a year and a half ago, two years ago. We just weren't able to fill the position. Like I said, we posted three, four times, just were not able to get there. Had that happened, we would have been addressing that now. So although it appears that the need just came up, that is not the case. It's just a matter of timing with coming before you for that. That's one of the last steps of this very, very long process.
So if I might ask, so you said that there's real, there's no real sunset to this, this program. And we know for sure that over the next 17 years, there's at least $15 million through the opioid restitution fund that's coming in. And so that comes out to what, about 800, by my math, about 882,000 a year? And so when you get to the end of that 17-year period, what happens? Does the funds continue to come in as in a new, that's it, at the end of the 17 years?
That's, that's part of the settlement. We have not received the, and we always plan to come back to the board with an update. We've been waiting for the last and the largest settlement, which is Purdue Pharma. And I'm sure you guys are aware, it's been tied up in court, it's been tied up in the Supreme Court. That settlement happened in July of this year. It took about two years for us to get, I think, our actual allocations once the first national settlements happened. So we're anticipating, hopefully in '26, at some point, we'll know exactly how much money the county will receive from the Purdue Pharma settlement. And I think then we can, we're gonna, that was our plan. Once we had all the settlement dollars, evaluate again how we are going to spend. Because there are other priorities that the board approved at the same time that you approved number one and two, which is the MAT services in the detention center. So we would like to, you know, fund some of those other initiatives, but we really, we don't have enough money. You're right, Commissioner Vigliotti. The FY25 cost of this program between the detention center and the nonprofit that's running the aftercare services is just over $1 million a year. So we will run out of money before the end of this settlement period to fund MAT. And so we'll see what the Purdue Pharma settlement looks like and then come back before you with another plan. We'll reconvene our county work group and evaluate that and come back to the board and discuss with you what, what we would recommend for next steps with the funding. But we probably won't know that soon.
Okay, but so, so for so many years, the program is funded.
Yes.
And it is a state mandated program.
And then it would come to the general fund. It would be an expense that the board would have to pick up.
And how much is the cost of the position, including benefits or anything that we would have to?
Roughly about $90,000 with the benefits.
About 90.
Salary, I think, is 46.
Salary is 46, correct.
Oh, how you hear Heidi?
Came up for that part. So yes, about $90,000 ongoing would be the cost for this position, including salary, benefits, pension, all of those different items associated with the position. So at some point, when the opioid restitution funding goes away, then we will have to look to either take this into the general fund or decide what to do with the position at that point. But it is a mandate, we are expecting to do this.
And Commissioner Judge, I'd like to add also with the overall budget, one of the things that we constantly work on is looking at how can we address all of the expenses? We realize this is a very expensive program. So when it first started, looking at the resources, the vendors, the services that were needed, we are constantly going back with our vendors to see what else can we do, what other options are there? So we are in the process now and we're, we're working on looking at being able to restructure some of those expenses to actually save some money, but we're not at that point yet because we're working on, in tandem with our normal contracts and budgets and things like that. So I don't want anyone to think that we just, oh, look, there's all this money, we're going to spend it. We, we look at every dollar in, in all of our budgets, but especially with this program, knowing it's expensive and knowing we want to try and make this, this money go as long as possible, but we're required to do that. And we're required to evaluate every incarcerated individual that comes into the facility to see if they're eligible for it. And if they are, we're required to basically offer the program to them. So we can't pick and choose. We do look at, like I said, all of our budgets and in fact, there's lots of papers out here working on that. Updated budget forecast now, just for this program, but we spend a lot of time looking at that.
You mentioned that it's 882,000 a year that we get, but the program is about $1 million a year. How's that shortfall made up? How much is budgeted for the whole program through Carroll County?
Well, we have a balance right now in the opioid restitution fund. So we're, you know, the revenue is, is coming in a little bit.
But what was, Bobby, I'm trying to, I wasn't here for the last budget session. But so when we did the budget last year, how much was in here allocated out of that for this program?
So it's separate that are operating budgets? It's its own separate funds.
So you're operating right out, so right now it's just all for this, but there's a short, it sounds like there's a shortfall because you've had increased usage, you said 882.
Right now, there's a total left in the funds of.
Heidi, sir.
Let me add one thing. So the way the settlements are structured, they're not structured necessarily that it's the same dollar amount every year. It could be that there is a large chunk of money that comes in in the beginning and then the settlement has a sliding scale to the point where it will eventually be eliminated. But each settlement is different, each pharmaceutical company has been different. So it's been very interesting figuring out how to track those and look at those. But every settlement that we have had so far has been a different structure.
So this doesn't come through the regular budget process for the county? It just comes through the opioid restitution budget process?
It is, it is, it is looked at, it is included in the information that we provide to the commissioners. It is in the budget book, if you wanted to see.
And you said you had a half already, part-time person, but you couldn't fill it. So is that already considered in that budget? Would you only be needing half of this more than you anticipated? What, what did you originally ask for? What did you expect to use out of that restitution fund?
Initially, we were looking for a little over half because we were looking for a part-time position. Again, the program was new, not knowing the volume. Initially, I think discussions were, oh, there would only be 20 or 30 participants. And when you have 90 in a day and the amount of work it supports.
So you already asked for a half and it was in the budget?
Originally, originally it was a 25-hour position that was being discussed. So this would be a change and that rather than a 25-hour, we would be moving to a 40-hour position.
And, and do the benefits matter for 25 versus 40?
Yes.
Okay, so adds that up. And also, is any of this covered by Medicaid or private insurance, any of the MAT in the prisons? They can't.
No, you can't bill for any insurance. We're responsible for those medical costs. Now, once they're out, once they're released and they go into the care of the nonprofit, that they, they, they can bill insurance at that point or get them on Medicare or Medicaid.
When you, you mentioned a warm handoff. They're awaiting trial, so if their warm handoff is to be somewhere else, does that then transfer to another prison somewhere? What normally happens with people when they're let out?
So if they're sentenced to DOC, we notify DOC that they are on MAT and then DOC goes ahead and they'll, they'll go ahead and do the prescriptions as well down there. They go to a treatment facility, then that treatment facility is the same way. If they are getting released and they're going back home, then that's where Mountain Manor comes in and they will do, we'll do the warm handoff to them and then they'll go ahead and find the community services and then meet those requirements as well.
The reason I'm asking is Mountain Manor, they bill Medicaid. They bill Medicaid, you know, when they get the warm handoff, I just wanted, I didn't know why. Maybe it's just the way it is, but, you know, they, they are able not to bill Medicaid, that's how they, they're able to survive. So do we get any feedback on like, how it's worked? Has it reduced recidivism? Has it been a positive experience?
I do, I think the numbers reflect, I mean, countywide, that overdoses have went down. And I believe that a lot of the recidivisms, we, we don't see a lot of those people back and hopefully that's, they are gaining something from the educational piece of the MAT program. It's not just the medication, it's also the education. So it's, it's hopes that even though we've only been at this for about three years, I think it has made a difference.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see, you know, see some information on that because that's, it'd be great if it, if it is. But what, what percentage of people from the jail go to DOC versus get released to, do they all get released to Mountain Manor if, do they, is it mandatory that they have to go if they're on the MAT program?
So.
First question was DOC. What's the percentage go somewhere else after they're adjudicated versus gets let out?
I mean, it's a, it's a, those numbers go up and down. There's quite a few that go. I know in the past month, there's probably been about six to eight that have went to DOC versus the individuals that come in and out of our doors and are back on, on the street, which is much more. Those going to treatment, right now, I think, out in our custody, we have over 30 individuals that are currently out at treatment and there's probably a strong percentage of 65, 70% of them that were on MAT.
No, if they, if they stay off and stay clean, that's, that's our best investment. I always wondered, you put people in jail, they get out, 10 years later and they're still addicts because they haven't been treated. But as long as we're getting return on the investment and the recidivism rate is going down and we're getting people back into the workforce, that's our, that's our goal. And it'd be nice to see, I don't know who follows, follows that. I've been very impressed with Mountain Manor down in Sykesville. They've done a very good job since they've taken over, I think. We have lots of opportunity down there, so that's our end, end goal. But I guess, so next year during the budget process, this would come back again? I was trying to figure out why it wasn't requested during the budget process the first time. It's because you were just at a half versus a whole?
So Heidi, the question is, it's because it's not, the budget process goes through our operating budgets? Because this is funded separately, it's not something that normally we would formally request? Is that a question?
So. I'm back. Heidi Pepin, Division Manager of Budget, by the way. So this is coming to you now in part because they're looking to fill that position. So there was discussion, again, at a high level of what we were going to do with the opioid restitution fund, but specifically, we needed to come in and make sure that the board does approve moving forward with this position and moving forward with this position paid through this particular fund. We do discuss the special revenues. This is a special revenue, which really means that the revenues or the, the funding coming in has to be used for very specific purposes. We do discuss these during budget process. This past year EMS billing probably was our most discussed special revenue, but part of the process, but this specific position was not requested, not, not, not that it wasn't requested. This position was not discussed at that time in that process, but it's here now because they're looking to fill it.
One, just last thing, I thank you for inviting me over to see the program. I want to see it, I've been wanting to see it for a while, so I will, I will catch up with you on that at some point, so thank you.
Please reach out.
A question specifically on this position. And you guys have seen grants and Carroll County Public Schools actually funded, I think, nine positions from fund balance six years ago. But they specifically said, this is for three years. If we don't have other funding for this, the positions will be terminated. Are you willing to let this motion say that, since it already says this position's funded out of opioid point settlement funds, that if they don't exist, the position will be terminated?
Just checking what we had in the postings, sir.
The problem could be at the time is that the program may be in twenty years roughly. The anticipation is that the requirement to run the program may still be there. And so, there would be some way, somehow.
Some sort of need.
Some kind of need that the county would need to fill.
And I'm worried about next year and the next year. Twenty years from now, the whole budget will be different. But this isn't in your operating budget and you don't intend it to be. So, if it's not funded by, this motion says opioid settlement funds. If it's not funded by that, it can't exist, right?
That is true. The, I will talk about the difference for, let's talk about an annual grant, let's say, through GOCPP. When we, if we ever would have asked for a grant position, the grant has a firm performance period of a year. You're absolutely right. Each year, and it has been a very long time. Well, we had a part-time position a good while ago, but before that, we looked not to fund positions through an annual grant because of that risk. And those positions definitely everyone knew. The employee knew. It was, it was straight grant contingent. And if the grant wasn't renewed, you were out of a job. But those grants had a definitive one-year performance period and we would have to reapply every year. In this case, looking at it, the reason we looked to fund it is this is a little different in that, one, there's not a sunset for the program, but also, it's not like a one year that where we have to specifically apply for the funding every year and the position is in jeopardy on an annual basis. It's a longer term, potentially longer term funding stream. So, I think that's a different type of a category in this case, which is why it wasn't written.
It's not different in my mind. If you say, this will be funded by opioid settlement funds, if there's not enough money there, then it can't be funded. That's what you're specifically asking.
Correct.
And so.
And if the position would still be necessary at that point.
We would have to come back.
If all the powers that be, whoever they are at that time, decide that it's still necessary, then another funding.
We would have to address that. I don't, I don't like to, absolutely. What I was.
But it would definitely be assessed at that time because.
Ted's shaking his head, so I feel better.
Yes, little Ted. Shorter, take away, Ted came back.
A little more hair, though.
Shorter, more hair, you know, a few differences. Yes, at that point, when we start to see that opioid restitution funds will no longer be available, we would be bringing, if we feel that position is still necessary, we would be bringing it to the board to see if the board wants to fund it and how we would choose to fund it at that point.
But you don't see a risk in the near future?
In the near future, no. Because of the opioid settlements that have already been established, we should be good in the near future. And again, budget works on a six-year basis, our six-year operating plan. So, it would be somewhere outside of that plan that we would have some concerns.
And so, I mean, so the bottom line is the MAT program is state mandated. So, regardless of what we do, we have to find a way to pay for it. The state did not give us an opportunity to ask for that money.
No, it's unfunded.
It's unfunded. And that this position sounds needed. I mean, we talk about MAT program a lot with you and you're constantly having to come back and get additional funding because, yeah, because the numbers of, they do fluctuate, but they're pretty high. And what's also seems pretty obvious is that although the opioid settlement funding is not, it's not infinite amount of money and it's not infinite amount of time, we're looking at at least six, ten, fifteen years of. So, either way, we've got to come up with the money for this. The opioid settlement funding, the whole story behind it, it's an interesting story how that money, which is a settlement funding, has to be used to primarily buy pharmaceuticals from a lot of the same companies, wouldn't you know, who helped get us into this mess in the first place. So, I wanted to bring that up. But I think those two facts that I just mentioned are very germane to this. We've got to pay for these positions whether we like it or not, and they're doing good. So.
And I will say, Commissioners, with the current board, all the work that I'm going to speak for, where I'm constantly looking at what can we do otherwise? And I think, you know, a lot of people wear a lot of hats. And if we didn't feel it was really important to coordinate stuff like this, we wouldn't have even looked at it at the beginning. But once we saw how it was growing and all of the pieces that it takes, it's a very complex program to manage. And there is not one person that is doing it. There's five, six, seven of us that are taking all the pieces on all the time. So.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to approve the use of county opioid settlement funds to support the addition of an MAT coordinator position.
Second.
Any further questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And now, since budget's here, we're going to talk about state and local fiscal recovery fund update.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yes, I am staying. Let me see if I can figure out where the PowerPoint is. There we go. And here? Yeah, okay, very good. So, Commissioners, again, Debbie Staniford, Grants Office, here with the other half of the Grants Office, Corey Hardinger. And we are going to give you a overview of the state and local fiscal recovery fund. We shortened that to FRF. You'll hear some jurisdictions refer to this as their ARPA money. This is the money that went to every state, county, and municipal municipality in the country. All eight of Carroll's municipalities received this money. And so, we'll give you an overview. We're going to review the projects and we have one recommendation for the board today. And I will just mention, while Grants leads this project, it is a team that is managing this. From the beginning, the county administrator, the deputy administrator, the budget office, the directors, and the comptroller have all been a part of managing this funding. You also have a one-page list of the projects in your packet for ease of reference. And those are numbered if you have a specific question about the projects. I need to get rid of this.
If you can, Chris?
So.
Get rid, you mean, try to get rid of that?
I don't know what that, oh, there we go. Maybe I'll just do that. Okay. So, the plan, we started with this money in twenty-one, three eleven twenty-one, and the performance period runs through twelve thirty-one of twenty-six. We were awarded thirty-two point seven million dollars. All of that money had to be under contract by twelve thirty-one twenty-four. That's about the last time we were before you. We did meet that obligation deadline. All of the money was obligated by that point, and it needs to be spent by the end of twenty-six. We are currently, we have spent about twenty-one million, about sixty-four percent spent. The board also elected to keep the interest that we were earning on the FRF because the federal government forward funded this, to keep that interest in the plan. The board has approved all of the interest allocations to date. We've earned four point two million and allocated two point five with another one point seven million to be, that has remained unallocated. So, just a brief overview, again, it was released in twenty-one. We received two allocations in the spring of twenty-one and the spring of twenty-two. The final regulations were released in twenty-two. The grant was intended to assist us to respond to COVID- nineteen, to stimulate the local economy, and to support long-term recovery. Eligible expenses included response to public health emergency. And this was broadly described in the guidance to include, you know, HVAC improvements, behavioral health impact of the pandemic, and improvements to congregate living facilities. We also were able to expand broadband into unserved and underserved areas. And water, wastewater, and stormwater projects were eligible. So, this is a look at the board's plan by category. Fifty percent of the board's money went to broadband expansion. Eighteen percent into water and wastewater projects. This included the partnerships that you had with three municipalities to support their water projects. Sixteen percent in human services. This is the family shelter and behavioral health. Twelve percent in public works. This included, majority of this money was HVAC improvements in county facilities. We spent three percent on a stormwater project. COVID response was one percent, and then admin, less than one percent. So, I'm going to go through the project list. I'll go through this fairly quickly, but stop me if you have any questions. You'll see the administrative projects that we had associated with the FRF. The only one that continues to be open is the single audit. This project is audited internally every year and we pay our portion of that cost. We had some allied agency requests from the sheriff and circuit court that were funded. All of those projects are complete. The collaboration with the municipalities on water supply. There is an update to when I did this PowerPoint last week. Westminster has drawn the last of their money. So, from our perspective, that project is complete. They will continue construction through twenty-six. And I understand construction will be complete in twenty-six. And then we had a small fire in EMS project. These are public works projects. We did the Ag Center parking lot and stormwater, associated stormwater work. We purchased a portable generator to provide power to twenty-four seven facilities. We did three big HVAC projects at the county at workforce development, here in the county office building and the detention center. Those are complete, and really, the county office building project is right on the verge of being complete. And then we have three wastewater and water projects within our Bureau of Utilities. The Freedom Treatment Plant, Hampstead, the largest project, Hampstead Wastewater Treatment Plant, and then the Shiloh Pump Station. Those are ongoing, but will be complete by the end of twenty-six. Citizen Services, we had two projects here, the Family Shelter. That should be complete by the end of this year. We put out an RFP for nonprofits to provide additional behavioral health supports in the community. Those projects that was awarded to four nonprofits, as we'll wrap up by July of this year, of twenty-six, rather. And then, the largest, and fifty percent of your money went to IT for broadband projects. We funded a fiber project manager, the county, and then to serve, to provide service to unserved and underserved residents. We put out a county RFP. This was awarded to Comcast and Verizon. We provided match to three state grants that were awarded to Quantum Internet Services, and the match is listed there. And then the last is the Long Driveway Hard-to-Connect Program was a state grant. We had a couple ISPs participate in that program and we provided the match to that. And then we did, I will note that we did leverage a lot of ISP and state funding with our money. The total investment in broadband was forty-nine million dollars. And of that, seventeen million was county money. Oh, and then one more project. I thought I was at the end. Melstone, we had a one stormwater management project through planning and land and resource management that we funded, and that is ongoing. That should be done by the end of this year. Do you have any questions about the plan or the projects that I can answer?
So, FRF award money, if it's, in order not to lose it at the end of December twenty twenty-six, it has to be actually expended or appropriated? Expended, okay.
Yes. The appropriation was by the end of twenty-four. So, we had to have it under contract by the end of twenty-four and then, yes, spent by the end of twenty-six.
On that, the interest.
Yes.
We won't lose.
That is correct. The interest, and you're correct. And I think I had that in the PowerPoint. The interest is not subject to those restrictions. Yes.
So, if we selectively use that, which is what you're asking today, you feel we're pretty safe?
I think that we can strategically use some of the interest at the end of the projects and, you know, to make sure that we can continue them if they need to be continued. And my goal is for all these projects to be done by the end of twenty-six, but.
Is that where you were?
Yeah, so you finished my thought essentially. That was my follow-on question. And then, lastly, so what you are asking for is for FRF award money that hasn't been expended to go towards existing projects, which you mentioned here.
Yes. Yes, it will not change the list of projects. It will just give us some flexibility if we need it at the end. And I would say too, what I would propose is at the end of twenty-six, we come back to you and we will take a look at what those balances are, and then you can decide. That would be a board decision, if those, if you wanted those projects to continue that perhaps weren't finished and what that would take. But I think we can, we can make sure that the federal money is spent down by that point.
You said they're all under contract, so why would they not be finished? They just wouldn't be paid for by the end of twenty-six?
If they, if they, if for some reason, you know, they didn't have time to finish what they have.
Wouldn't that be their responsibility to do, that should be on panel, I mean, since we're going to lose our funding?
Yes, but then we may have a project, because we can't spend the federal money beyond that point. So, if the project ends and the project is not finished, then there is no money to complete it.
I would just hope that there be something in the contract saying that the expectation is to finish it. I know the broadband wasn't issued.
Absolutely.
Because why should we, we budgeted based on getting this federal money and we shouldn't necessarily have to eat it because it's not finished?
And, you know, for the, for the contracts that the county entered into, for the waste, you know, for our water treatment plant projects, yes, absolutely. And there are, you know, penalties in there for non-performance. And I feel confident, some of these were grant, were contracts or grants that the state entered into, and we are providing the match. So, we have less control over those projects.
I just would hate for it to us have to eat that. It's just a little editorial. You look at the amount we're getting, which is a huge amount, thirty-two million. And you multiply that times every town, every county, every state over the country, and you wonder why our country has a huge deficit. And no, one percent was used for COVID response. And I will say, having broadband expansion, obviously during COVID was a help for those who didn't have it. But, I mean, what a, my gosh, unbelievable waste. We invested this money well, but not everybody did. People are just looking for ways to spend money, and we have a deficit that's a number that no one can even realize. But we're at this little local level, taking advantage of it. But at the state, at the federal level, it's just unbelievable that this is a trillions, I mean, it's got to be trillions of dollars throughout the country that we're trying to spend and dispose of, and vitalize the, revitalize the country. And it's five years later and we're still looking for that. So, it's just.
No, it was a lot of money.
A lot of money.
Probably the other board heard me say many times, I think the federal government has literally lost their mind. But, you know, it came to us. I do think that we invested it in projects. And I think the other thing to remember and why we're going to run up against the deadlines too on some of these is we don't have projects designed and engineered and permitted and ready to go if we don't have funding to build those. So, when we looked, when we got this money and, you know, the board made the decisions about how to allocate it, then the design and engineering started. So, you know, it takes some time to get to that point where you can start construction. We weren't, we weren't ready to start construction in twenty-one.
Let's hope we can use it up and don't have to backfill these projects with ongoing money in the future.
And we did look at that. We looked at projects that the board already had prioritized. So, we were, we weren't looking to add projects to the county portfolio. We were looking at projects that needed to be complete because budget was a part of those discussions.
It seems like some very fundamental things that needed to get done, though.
But it is. And it was really a capacity issue for a lot of small jurisdictions. You know, we helped the municipalities throughout, you know, this process because there was a big tranche of money that came before this, you know, for COVID relief. So, there's been a lot of federal money with, to jurisdictions that don't normally get large allocations. So, it was a lot of work. But, so that is my motion. I think I got to it?
It is. I'm prepared to make a motion, but I do want to change it up a little bit because we say recommendations for FRF interest funds, and I'd rather leave the term interest out of that because I think it just complicates the matter a little bit. I mean, just FRF projects, you know, if that makes any sense, because we are, we're not, we're not going to touch that, the interest. We're looking at the award money to complete these. We're looking at the interest.
We are looking at the interest, yes, to have that flexibility.
Flexibility, because they, all the other money has to be spent by twenty-six.
If I understand, you want to move some of the interest around. That's what you're asking us. The rest of the funds are set and?
Yes. Yes.
Does that make you comfortable or?
Yeah, and then we know the amount, and the amount is?
One point seven million.
One point seven. And we are continuing to add interest to that, and it's probably up a little higher. I haven't checked for a week. I haven't checked for a week. But the interest stays within the FRF and we track that.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept the staff recommendations for FRF interest funds.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So now we have a public hearing on, to propose areas allowed under the Maryland Cannabis Administration's Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund. And Roberta, since we don't have Mr. Burke here, are you going to tell us what a public hearing is? And, and do we, do we want to have a presentation and then take public comment, right? Okay, so can you tell us what we're doing?
Yeah, as Deb's trying to find, Debbie's trying to find the PowerPoint.
Let me take care of this, okay?
Oh, okay.
No, he, I think he wants to take care of the PowerPoint for you.
All right, perfect.
Chris, Chris wants control of the PowerPoint, right?
Okay.
That's fine with me.
I wanted to bring the screen back up.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So, yes, so staff was before you recently, a couple of weeks ago, asked to go to public hearing. The public hearing was advertised for today. And so we will have, I think, a brief overview from staff as to what the, the subject matter is. And then if the board wants to ask any questions, they may. But we have folks here who want to make public comment either in person and there may be some people on the phone as well.
And our option at the end of it is to close the public hearing, but probably leave public comment open for 10 more days. So we can take emails, letters, whatever they want to do for 10 more days, correct?
And then you'll be back in two weeks for your final decision.
Okay.
So I just wanted to, I thought I had a PowerPoint and I don't see it, so I apologize. I'm not sure what happened. But our plan, and I don't know if it was going to be in two weeks. We, but we can come back in two weeks and, and give you our recommendations. The purpose of this public hearing was to just prioritize the purpose areas. The, the state has said, these are the ways that you can spend this money. I don't think it's enough money in an ongoing way to address all of those purpose areas. So we would probably recommend a shorter list. So we will be back before you to discuss what our recommendations are based on our, the input from the community.
And I'm sorry, that doesn't have to be two weeks. I didn't mean.
No, that's.
A normal course.
Yes, we will be back before, before the end of the year. I did want to mention that cannabis money is coming into the county in a lot of different ways. So we are receiving sales tax money that we split with Westminster City. We, the county health department receives money from the cannabis tax revenue to provide prevention work. There is a cannabis business assistance fund. Cannabis money is in the state general fund. We are focused on one specific part of that revenue, which is the Community Reinvestment and Repair Act. And I'm going to turn it over to Cory for a little bit of that background information.
Sure, thank you. I'll be very brief. So just as a recap, back in April of 2024, the Commissioners held a public hearing and passed an ordinance required to accept CRRF funding. The Grants Office was tasked with tracking revenue, developing an RFP to distribute the funding and to oversee the future grantees. And we have been current, we are currently gathering community input in order to prioritize the CRRF purpose areas for Carroll County's RFP. And as a reminder, the funding may only be used for community-based initiatives that benefit low-income communities, community-based initiatives that serve disproportionately impacted areas, which in Carroll County is anyone in zip code 21157. And then they do allow limited administrative expenses for county government. Two things that the funding cannot be used for, one is for law enforcement agencies or activities and it cannot supplant existing local government funds. And then the purpose areas is stated in House Bill 1364 and Senate Bill 0894. Behavioral health crisis response, education after-school programs, truancy and absenteeism intervention, housing and homelessness prevention, transportation improvement in high-density areas with public transit, job training and workforce development, community childcare and recreational services and programs that benefit individuals and families impacted by incarceration. So any of these purpose areas must impact or benefit low-income communities. And then community-based initiatives of any kind can be implemented in 21157, which is our only disproportionately impacted area.
Are we restricted on using this for something we're already paying for? Are we allowed to do that or this has to be?
No, we can't, we can't, we cannot. We can't supplant current, we can't take our money away and put this money in.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And then just as a reminder, we were, we were here on October 2nd to ask you to hold the public hearing on October 3rd. The Carroll County Times covered the public hearing. October 7th, the county released a press release. And then on October 16th, that was updated to reflect the 1:00 PM time change. So that is all from us, unless you have any questions for us.
How do they come up with the disproportionately based and impacted areas?
So this is a formula. Over 10 years, they looked at areas that had over, that had 150% higher arrest rate than the state average for cannabis-related possession charges. And so then they looked at each county and then they distributed the money based on that percentage. So for Carroll County, we received 1.99% of the CRRF fund. So it was actually over 20 years, but the, they, they looked at, they went back as far as 20 years, but the data for the 1.99% came from 10 years prior to legalization of adult-use cannabis.
I don't know, I swear, how they come up with these formulas?
I can't believe she remembers it without looking.
The reason I'm saying, there's problems, there's these, it's not just one area that has need for this kind of resources. And to just say that the one area, because it was over this little rate, gets 100% and the other areas we can't take care of.
Well, we, we can address any area in the county as long as those folks are low-income. So that is the other issue, that if it's not in 21157, people that benefit from the programs must be low-income.
And with the disproportionate impact, how far back does that go? How do they define that?
That went back 10 years. So they looked at possession charges and they looked at across the state and areas where there were people's zip code who were charged, where their zip code was. They determined that 21157 had a higher than, was, the percentage of arrests were 150% higher than the average, if that makes sense.
It wasn't even convicted, it was just charged.
Yes.
And I would say, Commissioner, that you can restrict this further. You cannot use it for other purposes, but you could decide, we're not going to fund that. You know, we, we are going to do services for folks that are low-income across the county and we're going to choose these three purpose areas. So you can make it more restrictive. You just can't add purpose areas to this. So you could say that we don't want to do services specifically in 21157, if, if you felt. And I think there was some discussion around the Enough Act and that's also focused in 21157 and Union Bridge. And I think the comment from the board at that time was, but there is poverty throughout our county. And there is. And in this case, you could say, we're going to use this for low-income areas throughout the county in, in these purpose areas.
The reason I'm asking, I mean, I've served on the opioid prevention group for, since this began, but 10, 12 years ago. And we jointly, everybody involved, we, we made priorities years ago. And our number one priority we realized was prevention and prevention starting at the middle school level. Starting with kids, getting them confidence and not wanting to, to go down that path. And the Boys and Girls Clubs came out of all of that. And it is something to be proud of in this county. Just the Westminster when starting and just phenomenal, and now the spread to the rest of the entire community, you know, into North Carroll and into South Carroll and soon to be Mount Airy, I hope. But, and those clubs, I mean, there are resources they need. They do a lot of it on a shoestring. But it's, it's odd that you can only take care, we're already taking care, I think we're doing a good job in this area in Westminster because of all the resources that have been put in. And it's great, but now we need to expand it out. And now they're saying, no, you've just got to put more resources to the same place. And there's other things that can be done as well. I just, you know, I lived 20 years with this prescriptive stuff that they don't know what our community necessarily needs. And somebody comes up with this formula and says, this is going to work for everybody. And it's, it's frustrating because it ties your hands. I always say, give us the resources if you want and give us the outcomes that you want us to have and make us be accountable for how we do it. And unfortunately, somebody, some places can't handle that very well. Well, then why don't you prescribe it to them? But the counties that do handle it well and want to take care of the problem, let us have the flexibility. That's not a mindset that is occurring necessarily in Annapolis for a long time. But it's just, it's just what it is. So I apologize on behalf, I was gone by then. But it's just frustrating because it's, it's so prescriptive and we do have some really great ideas of what we want to spend our resources on. I think they've been successful, so.
And that's what we want to hear today.
Yes, yes.
People's ideas is to, that's the whole purpose of this public hearing.
But it's also got to be right, it's got to be here. And we've already got some things happening. We can't use it for the things that already happen and can't supplant.
Can't supplant, but you could supplement.
Yes, we can enhance.
You can, you can enhance, you can enhance to the ones we're trying to grow.
And that's the stakeholder group too. We really wanted to make sure that we weren't looking at duplication. So that was the thought behind committing that group, was to really make sure that we weren't missing something or that we weren't duplicating a service that was already in existence.
Are they specific, I mean, you've got a list of things. Are there specific programs here that you think need to be addressed?
The, the group, the, the feedback that we've gotten so far, they have prioritized. I didn't know if we should, you know, incorporate that today. We want to listen to public comment, you know. So I think we'd like to gather all that information before we give you a, a list. And then you certainly, I think the board's input is important as well as to what we address. So we didn't want to prioritize them today. Or, you know, it just seemed a little bit early.
And there might be ones we say no to, like this, love this list. Maybe once they, here's the priority and then once we say no, this isn't a priority at all?
Yes, you could say that. You could, you could, and you know, you know, for example, transportation. I, I don't think this is going to be enough money to address transportation. But I think what we would do, and I think the other thing that we'll talk to you about when we come back, is what the RFP will look like. Because we will go through county procurement, this will go out publicly. We'll have an RFP that will be scored. People will apply for the money. We'll have a committee that scores those applications and we will come back to the board with our recommendations. But I think for transportation, what our idea is that we will ask every program to tell us how they will address transportation. Because transportation always rises to the top of the list of, you know, challenges in a rural county. So we will ask each program that gets funded under this to address that. But I don't think we'll fund transportation specifically.
Say how many dollars we're talking about?
So we have one, we didn't say it in this presentation. We have been receiving this money for two years and we have had some one-time conversion fee money. So all it's told right now, we have 1.9 million dollars sitting. And we, we've been waiting for two things. We wanted to see what the revenue stream looked like before we started committing money. And we are waiting for state guidance, which we still do not have, about how, what data we will have to collect and exactly what they're expecting of us. So we're still waiting for that. I think in an ongoing way, there'll be about $250,000 a year based on the quarterly distributions that we're getting right now. So it is not going to be, in an ongoing way, a very large amount of money. We'd like to structure the first RFP to use part of that one-time, part of the money that we've already gotten. And, 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 you know, maybe in the first six years, we'll award a little bit more than that. But in an ongoing way, it'll be about $250,000 a year.
So the 1.9 is over two years?
Two years plus one-time conversion fees. And those were hefty. If you were converting from a medical dispensary to an adult-use cannabis, you paid, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars to do that conversion.
Conversion fees are a million dollars of the million nine. A million of that is from one-time fees.
And that's just Carroll County conversion fees?
That was the dispensaries that converted. So we won't see that money again because there were.
So all of our, ours have converted?
Yes.
There were two and they converted.
Yeah, so it was a half a million dollars to convert.
And that money could be carried forward, that money can be spread out over time?
Yes, and it's special revenue, so it has been, you know, kept in a discreet fund. It's earning interest and we can only use it for this purpose. So, and we, there is no end date for the use of it.
So in reference to the 250,000 a year, is there an end date for that? Does that have to be used within the 12 months or is that something we could actually carry forward?
And we're just basing that on the current revenue that we're receiving each quarter into this CRRF fund. It's about 60,000, 70,000. You know, it fluctuates quarter to quarter.
But it's trending.
It's trending down.
Sure. So given the 250,000 a year not having to be utilized within the 12-month period, obviously we're not going to use that to supplant other projects. But could that money be set aside similar to the funding we were just talking about from the federal government to gain interest and then utilize that? Either for further usage? Could the interest be used for additional purposes within these groups?
It has to be used within, with our, within these purpose areas.
Oh, no, I understand that. But what I'm saying is if we were to use that within those purpose areas and we sat on the 250 for, say, 12 months.
Yes.
Could the interest then also be utilized for those groups and areas?
Yeah, we have to keep.
No, absolutely, I understand that.
Yeah, we have to keep the interest in there.
I'm just saying it would be an opportunity to generate additional funding for those areas off of money that we're receiving anyway.
Yes.
Okay.
Last year, the interest was about 15,000. So it's not, we're not talking FRF.
Oh, no, I understand that. But I mean, you know, we've got countless nonprofits that come into this county every year and 15,000 for some can make or break them when it comes to grants and other things they need. One other question, you mentioned coming back to the board with some, you know, some examples of where this funding might be utilized, plus talking to us, obviously. For any organizations or individuals that have suggestions, how should those be suggested? Should they come to you all? Should they be coming through us? What's, what's the process?
So that's why we're here. So the, so public hearing today to receive information from anyone who wants to suggest how the money should be used. And then the record, if the board does what they normally do and what the recommendation is, is to leave that record open for 10 days. And then we'll accumulate all the, all the comments and thoughts and, and that will help inform what they, what we go out to request for proposal with. To get those actual service providers.
So are we ready for a public comment?
I am, if you aren't. Okay.
Kristi, do you have a timer?
I apologize in advance if I butcher your name. The first public commenter is Stephen Demoter.
All right, well, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Councilmember Stephen Demoter with the town of Mount Airy. Good afternoon again. I think one of the most fundamental responsibilities of a government is to provide for the safety of its citizens. And so I'm here before you this afternoon to ask for your help in helping to make my community safer. Specifically, provision of any funding you may have available towards meeting our estimated total need of $85,000 will help to address the cost of acquiring two weather alert sirens and delivering associated educational and crisis response programs. I believe this supports and intersects with the uses stated in the CRRF for benefiting low-income community members. Weather alert sirens are a proven technology for alerting people to seek safety. Tornadoes and floods often hit hardest in areas where resources are scarce. Low-income and vulnerable community members may live in older, less resilient housing and lack access to traditional emergency notification systems. Indeed, in 2018, Mount Airy was hit by a damaging tornado. Its impact included destruction of trailer homes in a nearby trailer park and caused damage to other residences and businesses within our community. In July of this year, we experienced a serious rainstorm with flash flooding, resulting in a devastating loss within our community. Many citizens, including low-income community members, may not have access to smartphones or internet services, which are used to disseminate National Weather Service emergency warnings. And there are citizen-identified cell phone dead zones in several areas of our town. Clearly moving forward, a weather alert siren system and associated education will help to reduce and present, prevent fatalities, injuries, and property damage. We've received letters of support from residents, businesses, and elected officials, and we've established a citizen-led inclement weather task force to advance this initiative. In closing, your funding assistance for this effort will help to ensure that everyone in Mount Airy, regardless of income or background, has a fair chance of responding to and surviving a natural weather disaster. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jimmy Gast.
Hey, good to see you guys. Pleasure to be here. So my name is Jimmy Gast. I work with alcoholics and addicts, but just to be clear, I'm speaking as a citizen of Carroll. with alcoholics and addicts, but just to be clear, I'm speaking as a citizen of Carroll County and as an individual in long-term recovery this afternoon, about the proposed funding linked to the issues with the rebuilding the cannabis community. Over the past several decades, our country has invested in drug prevention programs like Just Say No and Dare. Unfortunately, these programs were built on videos that point out the consequences and punishment, rather than education and understanding in long-term, and the evidence shows they were largely ineffective. As a result, we now face what's being called an addiction epidemic, one that spans generations and has been worsened by some policies that focused on incarceration instead of intervention. Families have been torn apart, and the cycle of addiction has continued. Evidence today points us in a new direction, toward treatment over incarceration and towards education over fear. We must address the root causes of these, root causes of these things, rather than simply punishing its symptoms. Speaking personally, my substances of choice were alcohol, opiates, and cocaine, not cannabis. My gateway drug was alcohol. In Carroll County, the data shows that alcohol-related hospitalizations far outnumber those caused by all other drugs combined. Yet our response to this has been limited to slogans like "Drink responsibly," or "Drive sober," or "Get pulled over." These messages are well-intentioned, but these scare tactics and slogans don't change behavior, education and awareness do. While we can't undo the harm of incarceration, or the years lost to certain policies, we now have an opportunity to use this funding to educate our community about cannabis in an honest, evidence-based way. That means teaching the pros and cons of use, identifying warning signs of addiction, and helping our youth develop critical thinking skills so they can make informed, responsible decisions for themselves. Federal attitudes are also shifting, we're seeing a move towards recognizing states' rights and respecting the will of the voters. Here in Maryland, and right here in Carroll County, our constituents voted to legalize cannabis. We have a chance to be leaders and to set the standard for what responsible, evidence-based education looks like. We can direct this funding to trusted experts and nonprofit organizations who understand prevention and community education, and start the conversation now before the misinformation or stigma can take root. We can either continue old methods that rely on fear and consequence, or we can choose a new path that promotes understanding. The choice we make in the, I guess, next coming weeks will shape how the next generation understands addiction, health, and personal responsibility. Let's make sure we choose education. Thank you, and thank you for bearing with me, I'm a little cold.
Thank you, thank you.
See you guys.
What's going around? Rick Glass.
My name is Rick Glass, and I'm a resident of Hampstead, as well as the founder of Cannacares, the only nonprofit in Carroll County dedicated to cannabis education. Hearing the discussion on October 2nd, I am deeply concerned. It was mentioned that the Health Department is focusing on education and prevention. Only one of those is accurate. In fact, their coalition is called the Cannabis Prevention Coalition, not the Cannabis Education Coalition, which I respectfully pointed out. True education involves exploring all facets of a topic by acknowledging both the potential benefits and the possible risks or side effects. Another statement made during the hearing compared cigarettes and cannabis. For some reason, cigarettes are bad and cannabis is good. That distinction exists for a scientific reason, the endocannabinoid system. Education about how this system interacts with phytoconabinoids, compounds found in cannabis, reveals how responsible use can have measurable health benefits. I also agree with the statement, alcohol use has dramatically declined among young people, and I think that's a good thing. But are we so unwilling to consider that increased access to and social acceptance of cannabis might be contributing to this positive trend? Alcohol has always been, and always will remain, far harm, far more harmful to individuals and society than cannabis by virtually any metric. Cannabis effects do not depend on intention. The medicinal value lies within the plant itself, not in the possession of a medical cannabis card. Unfortunately, there continues to be widespread misinformation. Cannabis has never been pharmaceutically manufactured in Maryland, and Maryland's regulations remain nearly identical to those that existed under the medical-only program. There are legitimate reasons why some people would prefer inhalation over edibles or tinctures. As a medical cardholder, I can avoid the 12% tax and purchase, and purchase edibles in doses higher than 10 milligrams, but those are essentially the only differences. Well, aside from one major one, as a medical cannabis cardholder, I lose my right to own a firearm. I am a veteran who fought for this country, yet I've had my Second Amendment rights stripped away because of a plant that has saved my life, keeping me alcohol-free for over eight years, and prescription-free for more than seven. To the commissioners who say I support medical cannabis but not recreational, I ask this: Will you personally call the 10,000 veterans in our county and tell them that the only way you support them using this plant is by them surrendering their constitutional rights? It's time to lift the veil. Positive outcomes from responsible cannabis use are happening in our community every day. Yes, education is critical, but it must be cannabis education, and not just prevention messaging. I would be honored to contribute to that effort. On September 28th, Donald, President Donald Trump released a video emphasizing the need for physician education about the endocannabinoid system. Federal rescheduling of cannabis is likely imminent. If the President of the United States can begin acknowledging the science, I believe our county commissioners can too. I strongly urge you to ensure that a portion of the 1.9 million supports true cannabis education, and not merely demonizing this plant that is helping so many. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Renee Risinger.
Hello, and thank you for letting me be here today. I'm a nurse, I've been a nurse for 42 years, I've been a nurse practitioner for 19. I come to you from the realm of public health. I still work in public health on the eastern shore, and live in Baltimore County. Cannabis is medicine. I'm a graduate of the University of Maryland School of Pharmacy Medical Cannabis Master Science and Therapeutics Program, and this is funded by the state of Maryland, it was approved by the Maryland Attorney General. What's lacking is education of the endocannabinoid system, like Rick touched on. Part of this goes back to our university programs. The AMA and the American Psychiatric Association still see this as a Schedule I drug that's very dangerous. There are very few schools of nursing, pharmacy, medicine, social work, that teach the endocannabinoid system, thus the lack of education in our communities. So we definitely need to focus on that. And then implications for Carroll County, I feel grateful to be here, speaking to you. So the majority of voters want medical, safe medical cannabis use and recreational legal. So what we need to talk about is safe medical, is safe cannabis access. So as a stewardship of funds, and having been raised by two wonderful parents who taught me how to be a steward of finances, we need to have a great respect for how we use these funds. We want to improve the health of the population, educate, talk about Safe Cannabis Grow. The gentleman on the left spoke about the MAT program with the pharmaceutical industries that made money on the opioid epidemic. I really didn't connect the dots with the MAT programs, that the same pharmaceutical companies that require us to purchase methadone, suboxone, are the ones that are benefiting from that. Cannabis is an exit drug, the data is there. One thing to hear from the federal government is that there's a lack of data. There's a lack of data in the US, but when we made this illegal for the past 80 years, the rest of the nation still worked on high-quality, peer-reviewed evidence, and it's out there. So, a couple things, when I work with patients with medical cannabis, patients will say to me, well, I always need cannabis, it's a quick Band-Aid fix to those endocannabinoid deficits. Diet, exercise, stress reduction, meditation are all things that we can move into the community, along maybe with hemp grow facilities at some of the already entrenched agricultural center that I saw, and the clubs that you were talking about, the boys' clubs, the boys' clubs, I forget what you called those.
Boys and girls.
Boys and girls' clubs. You know, to teach at a vocational level in high schools hemp grow, safe cannabis grow. And maybe in the future, Carroll County could take the lead on maybe using that with their MAT programs. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Kate Swisher.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am Kate Swisher, I'm the Assistant Clinical Director with Carroll County Youth Service Bureau. We are an agency that provides a continuum of care to people of, across the lifespan throughout our community. We've been in the community since 1972. We have some programs that are actively engaging with clients and county residents, and providing services that we think could use a lot of expansion and a lot of continuation, based on the fact that we are really at the forefront of providing a lot of behavioral health response, crisis response services on a day-to-day basis. Our open access clinic program provides same-day, next-day, or within the same week care and diagnostic assessments to county residents, again, across the lifespan, and from a majority, really, from low-income communities. We are kind of most often absorbing almost 90% of those assessments into our continuum of services. We're providing mental health and substance use treatment, not only to clients, but to entire families, so we're really addressing that need. Our suicide intervention and prevention services program serves people under the age of 18, and is really, again, a forefront of behavioral health crisis response. People can refer into that emergency assessment need from all parts of the community, including school, families, outside providers as well. And the expansion of this program is extremely valuable, as we know that this is a great need in our community. Our Connecting Youth Program also provides youth ages 16 to 24 with linkages to the workforce, to launching into the community in a healthy way, into more education, and out of housing crisis. So some of our ideas to access, to use CRRF funding are, like I mentioned, kind of an expansion of some of those programs that are really based in quality and care and foundation. But also, to address, a way to kind of further expand our crisis response programs, are some ideas to provide services to high-poverty areas of the county with RVs outfitted, with equipment for blood draws, more client meeting spaces to meet clients where they are in the community, office equipment, including computers and clients that, that clients can use to apply for benefits, because we know that that's a great need. And this would also address some of the transportation concerns that we certainly experience as an agency, with people getting access to our services. And it would really fill that gap that we know is so crucial, with people getting access to care, and then sticking in with care, and accessing more long-term services too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jeff Willhide.
Sitting too long, sorry. Hi, my name's Jeff Willhide. I'm not quite as prepared as everybody else so far, but I just wanted to make my feelings known. I actually thought that, you know, this money could be used for Carroll County Public Schools. Hearing now, that that's probably not the case. I do still think that we can get that money into the school system, where teachers would be able to use it for low-income individuals that are in their classes. Those, those teachers are the people that see the kids out there, know where the issues are, and could really help us get the money where it's really needed. So, that's my thoughts, and I'm going to yield my time back, as my son says.
Yeah, thank you.
Next is Josh Willhide.
Yeah, go ahead. I don't know how, yeah, I mean, you guys know who I am. Good evening, or afternoon, Commissioners. I just kind of wanted to get up here and say my two cents about how every time that there's a vice, and every time that we go to try to legalize it, the selling point to the communities are always that the funding will go to the schools. If you look at the Maryland State Lottery, they talk about, well, you know, if we legalize this, all the funds that will come from the Maryland State Lottery will go to the school systems. If we look at when the casinos were passed in Maryland, that was a very much selling point, that was all over the news and everywhere else, that any of the funds or revenues that are coming from these sources will go back to the school system. We saw it again with the cannabis legalization, as part of the marketing for the vote on the ballot, was that a lot of this money was going to go back to the school systems and fund and help programs for the youth. And here we are, having to continually fight for our schools. I mean, you guys understand that I'm very passionate about CCPS and the funding for CCPS. I do understand that this is a complicated topic, and that has to be broken into the categories, or it has to be used for after-school programs or things along those lines. I do like to highlight that education, I do think, is the most highest priority that should be utilized in this expenditure. You know, I'm not against adult education either. I know that I am a advocate for the schools, but I also understand that education is always paramount, and that even if you graduate out of the school system, education at any level is always welcomed and deserved. And, you know, it's just frustrating that every time, you know, we are promised that if this gets legalized, all the funding will eventually make itself back to the school, but here we are in Carroll County with the lowest funded per pupil expenditure, and it would be nice to see some of this money that is recurring to be sent back into our schools like it was promised to the community. I yield my time back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Stephanie Powers.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Powers, and I'm the Executive Director of the Care Healing Center, formerly the Rape Crisis Intervention Service of Carroll County. I'm here today because I believe that victim services would be a very good use of the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund, as our work directly aligns with several of the allowable purpose areas, including behavioral health crisis response, programs benefiting residents in 21157, services for low-income individuals, and those impacted by incarceration. Since 1978, CARE has been providing free and confidential services to survivors of sexual assault and human trafficking within our county. Our primary services include our 24-hour helpline, walk-in crisis intervention, accompaniments with survivors to the hospital for forensic exams, to court, and with law enforcement for interviewing. We also provide free individual group counseling for those survivors aged five and up. Human connection is a protective factor after a trauma. Immediate response following a sexual assault is critical. Research shows that survivors who receive timely crisis intervention and counseling experience fewer long-term symptoms of PTSD, depression, and substance misuse. Without that early intervention, survivors are far more likely to turn to substance as a way to cope. In fact, survivors of sexual violence are 13 times more likely to abuse alcohol, and 26 more times, 26 times more likely to develop a substance use disorder than those without that trauma. According to NIH, untreated survivors are also more likely to drop out of school, engage in risk-taking behaviors, and experience lifelong physical and mental health consequences. At CARE, we are seeing an increased need for services. Last year, we served 226 survivors. In just the four months of our current fiscal year, we've already supported 133, nearly 60% of last year's total. Our helpline calls have increased by 87.5%, and requests for hospital accompaniments for forensic exams are up 9.5%. We are serving more survivors with increasingly complex behavioral health needs, at a time when federal funding for victim services continues to decline. Beyond crisis response, CARE is proactive in building community awareness and prevention. Through partnerships within the county, we deliver education and intervention programs that teach children and teens about healthy relationships, consent, and personal safety, helping to prevent sexual violence before it occurs, and promote a culture of respect and safety within our community. I understand that some community members may have reservations about the source of these funds, given that cannabis remains illegal at the federal level, but by directing this revenue towards healing and prevention, we can transform what may some view as immoral into a powerful investment in recovery, public health, and long-term community well-being. These funds would offer Carroll County an opportunity to break cycles of trauma, expand services, and ensure survivors continue to receive compassionate, trauma-informed support when they need it most. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your continued commitment to the safety and wellness of our community.
May I just ask, if those of you have specific, you have a lot of.
Good afternoon. My name is Sharon Willhide. I'm here to speak regarding the revenue about from cannabis. I cannot believe there was even a discussion of not accepting the money from the state. As Commissioner Kyler stated in your October 2nd meeting, you must listen to the people who you represent, and a majority of Carroll County voted in favor of cannabis, and I think that's apparent as to how many people are here speaking about it as well. It's legal in the state of Maryland for both medicinal and recreational purposes, so regardless of your personal stance on the topic, it's here legally, and we are being given an opportunity for funds and what to do with them because of it. Now, we're all discussing what to do with 1.9 million dollars, and it sounds like a big, huge pot of money. According to the state, it is long-term revenue, it is not a one-time fund. According to the state, the funds need to be used to help low-income families, specifically in the 21157 zip code. There are stipulations that the money can only be used for certain purposes. There are stipulations that the money can only be used for certain purposes, including education and after-school programs. There are twelve schools in the 21157 zip code, including elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, and specialty schools like Carroll Springs, Gateway, and the Career and Tech Center. That money needs to be used for those schools, period, whether it's providing school supplies for students who can't afford them, food for students who do not eat after they leave their school building for that day, after-school programs for students who go home to no one because their parents are working multiple jobs and their latchkey kid's going home by themselves, to providing quality drug and cannabis education for our students so they know what to do when they encounter it. Research shows that quality sex education leads to lower rates of teen pregnancies and STDs, while also promoting healthier relationships and preventing sexual violence. Although it's newer, I have no doubt in my mind that cannabis education is the same. It could also help students, sorry, it would provide safer usage of cannabis. It could also provide students to understand that there are medicinal usages for certain conditions that could one day save the life of someone struggling with mental illness. I could not find any formal information online regarding the drug education programs specifically within Carroll County Public Schools. DARE is not used anymore. I could not find a specific curriculum. I'm not sure if there is. But we need a more effective drug program, because if I couldn't find it, then that means there's a missing link. Every time something that this money is used, supposed to be used for cannabis, so we need to make sure that it goes into drug education. Every time something new, as my husband had said, is introduced at the legislative level, and growing up, I always heard this, that, oh, the lottery, the money's gonna go to education. Oh, they're gonna open casinos, the money's gonna go to education. And cannabis, oh, it's gonna go to education, but then now we're here talking about what it's supposed to go to. You have the ability to use cannabis money for education. At your public budget hearing in May, the vast majority of the public said they were in favor of spending money on our schools and on education. Do your job, listen to your constituents, and do the right thing. Put this money towards education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Catherine Adelaide.
Catherine Adelaide, a member of the Carroll County Republican Central Committee. So you heard today how to use the pot proceeds. Whatever the question is, the answer is always, what does the law say? These are citizens, wonderful citizens. Everything they're saying would be great, except for one huge problem. You're legislators. You make law. Here's what the law says, and you all know it full well. It's illegal. It's not just illegal at the federal level. The Controlled Substance Act of nineteen seventy is still in effect. It hasn't been moved to another schedule. It has to be completely removed from the Controlled Substance Act and then regulated by the FDA like any other drug. Case closed. Article six, the supremacy clause, which says if there's a conflict between state law and federal law, the feds win. There is a conflict, the feds win. The Controlled Substance Act of nineteen seventy supersedes a superior law, the Cannabis Reform Act of Maryland. Then finally, you have the Supreme Court case decided in two thousand and five, Gonzalez v. Raich, which has not been overturned and which specifically used the supremacy clause and the commerce clause to authorize the feds to fully regulate cannabis. So unfortunately, because of the media, I don't blame anybody, but I truly believe if they understood, you're starting from something that's already illegal. So the proceeds from something that's already illegal are also illegal. That's called money laundering. The fruit of the poisonous tree, you're all probably familiar with this legal doctrine, if the police infringe on somebody's rights, they can't use the evidence from that infringement in a court of law. This is fruit of a poisonous tree. It's poison from the ground up, and you have really no authority to accept these proceeds. And the only thing that you really can do is to reject these funds. And as one of you raised quite, you know, rightly, it's your duty to reject these funds. I invite all of these people, go get the law changed first. The people of the state of Maryland have no authority to create law regulating drugs. That's the job of the FDA. The people of the state of Maryland, if they decide to pass human trafficking, cannot create a ballot issue. They have no authority to pass this. We live in a constitutional republic where you have to follow the rule of law. Finally, though, there's no authority to have this hearing, since you're having one, I would ask you keep the record open for ten days, and that when you do vote, that you soundly reject these proceeds with all their good intentions until this stuff is completely legal in the state of Maryland, which means it has to be authorized federally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Karen Donaldson. Oh, then Amy Hardesty, who I also believe left. Rhonda Bean.
I watch your meetings every week, and all these people probably have really good nonprofits. They probably do really good work for people that come in, and they probably have really good intentions with all the education, the programs, the phone calls people can call and go get help. They have the methadone programs where people can go in, and yet sometimes they go into those, and if they don't have insurance, the people will turn them away. And yet they have funding from the state that says they don't need insurance, and they get turned away. Where do they go when they get turned away? Where do they go when all these nonprofits don't have enough funds, don't have enough people, everybody's short-staffed? They go back out on the street. And where do they go back out on the street? Because they got illegal drugs or whatever kind of prescriptions. It's not enough. It has to be more and more and more. They're not getting repercussions from the police, the judicial system, the courts, to be, you know, get off this system. Carroll County has been the poorest county with the poorest people, and it's a cycle. You gotta get to the, to what the root is, you know? You gotta stop the crime. You gotta stop giving out all this money every week, because somebody stands up here and says, I'm a nonprofit, and I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that. And are they holding, are you holding them accountable for it? Are you seeing where this money goes? Are you looking at the budgets? Are you seeing the people? Are you talking to the people and seeing they're really getting help? You know? It's not your job to fix society. Society should fix itself. You all should just oversee it. You know, you're not the one that, you know, created all these, these problems, but every time somebody wants to create, you know, more havoc with more crime and more drugs and, you know, and it is illegal. You know, it's not mandated in the states. It's a federal issue that is already a Schedule I, and, you know, your state's attorney or district's attorneys that are supposed to take care of all this crime and all these drugs, they need to start arresting these people. The police have all the people, they know where it's all coming from, and they never go after these people. There was four murders in my neighborhood, and all the police knew it, the ambulance knew it, and they stood there and watched a mother at the door say, I know my son's in there, I tracked his, my car. They, police and ambulance didn't do anything for this boy. She screamed and screamed and screamed. Finally, they threw the boy out on the, on the step. She got him to the hospital. Two weeks he was in the hospital because he was almost dead. They still didn't do anything. The crime needs to be taken care of. If kids aren't getting education, they need to look at why they're not getting education. You need to look at the root. You can't keep just forking out all this illegal money. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I just don't want to make sure I miss anyone. You missed Rhonda Bean, right? Was that, or was, did she just speak? Rhonda Bean? Right, okay, thank you. I just, Bobby Moore.
Hi, my name is Bobby Moore. Put that down a little bit. A little short. Hi, thank you for letting me come up here and speak today. We know that the Controlled Substance Act of nineteen seventy places cannabis, also known as marijuana, pot, just because it sounds a little bit better as cannabis. I think people prefer that, but it's really marijuana. It's pot. As a Schedule I, dangerous drug with a high rate of abuse, along with heroin, ecstasy, and LSD. I am, I'm a mother of four adult children. My eldest child is thirty-six. My youngest is twenty-six. My three eldest were in high school at the time when marijuana was known as the gateway drug. They fortunately never tried it, didn't mess with it. Ten years later, my son comes along, and he ended up doing marijuana. He's been in many, many programs, and at age twenty-six told me the other day, yeah, Mom, you know, yeah, I'm still smoking. It's, you know, it's legal, so I don't think it's immoral. Well, I do think it is immoral. It's a drug. You're trying to, you know, and I understand people have their convictions, but it is illegal. It's a federal substance, controlled substance. So first of all, as a body, even the state of Maryland, to say that it's legalized goes against, it's illegal. It's going against the federal. And then to take funds from that illegal, that I think it all, it's only pushing our children further away. We talk about education and education. That's the kind of education that they had twenty years ago. The fact that marijuana is a gateway drug. My son ended up doing all kinds of things. Meth, he still is participating in that because you all, their government, our state of Maryland, is saying, it's okay. It's all right. It's, it's cannabis. It's not. It's not all right. It's not all right for our children. It's not all right for us to be smelling it on the streets wherever we go. You know, it's like we can't even have our own health and the health of our children. I have nine grandchildren, and that's only from half of my crew. So, you know, I am very concerned about the state that we are putting our children into education and so forth. You know, I heard someone talking about the, the sex education and stuff. Some of this stuff is, is to be taught at home. If you choose to do that at home, you know, if you choose to smoke pot at home, do that if you can, but, you know, if that's your choice, but that doesn't mean that we have to legalize it, because it's illegal anyway. And then the funds, I agree, because it's, it is illegal, that also means that then, then we're laundering money as a state. And you are, I believe you are not required...
Please finish your thoughts.
You are not required to accept these funds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tony O'Neal.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Tony O'Neal, and I am the lifelong Carroll County resident and the owner of Peer Peace LLC, a locally licensed hemp and wellness business that's been proudly serving this community since two thousand and nineteen. On October second, this board voted anonymously to schedule today's public hearing regarding the proposed uses of Maryland cannabis, administration's Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund, a CR, CRRF. The record shows Commissioners Vigilotti and Gordon moved on second, seconded the action with full support from the board. Since the vote, many of us in the local hemp and cannabis community have followed this discussion closely. We understand that Carroll County has received approximately one-point-nine million through CRF, and there's ongoing debate over where these funds should go. I believe this movement presents a powerful opportunity, not just to spend money, but to shape public understanding and ensure responsible growth within this new industry. I respectfully ask that a meaningful portion of this funding be dedicated to education and community health specifically, training and education for our medical and health professionals. Let's empower doctors, nurses, and mental health providers with accurate, science-based information about cannabis and hemp so that they, so they can advise patients safely and without stigma. Community education and harm reduction programs. Funding could support workshops, school partnerships, and local campaigns that teach responsible use, prevent misuse, and clarify what's legal under Maryland and federal law. Support for compliance small hemp and cannabis businesses. Many of us, myself included, work hard to follow every regulation, pay every fee, and operate transparently. Helping compliant businesses thrive strengthens the local economy and keeps products safe and tested, rather than pushing residents toward the illegal market. Education and understanding are the foundation, are the foundation of safe, healthy communities. When we invest in knowledge, we reduce confusion, build trust, and protect both consumers and professionals. So as you deliberate on how to allocate this one-point-million, one-point-nine million dollars, I ask that you prioritize education, guidance, and transparency. Let's make Carroll County a model for how to use cannabis reinvestment funds responsibly in ways that truly serve the public good. Thank you for your time, your service, and your, and allowing me to speak today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Yard.
Hello, I'm Scott Yard. I'm the CEO of Human Service Partners of Carroll County, and the reason I'm here is because we are in the anti-poverty business. We serve roughly eight thousand, nine thousand Carroll County residents each year that are looking for a hand up and not necessarily handout. And as a nonprofit leader, we're always looking at opportunities to kind of pull the strings together with our budgets. Oftentimes, we, many nonprofits receive funds that are very strictly, have very strict guidelines, and they're very tightly monitored on how to use them. And the CRF fund could really present an opportunity to a lot of nonprofits that may have the oper, the funds to operate and do compensation and salaries, but maybe can't purchase that one-time vehicle to actually get people to and from appointments and things like that. We believe that this could be a great opportunity for a lot of different opportunities, which you are gonna have to figure out. And I just want to thank you for your, giving me a moment to come up, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
And the last, and the last person in person, at least, I don't know if we have any callers, is Andrew Manning.
Thank you. I promise this is related. Hello, Mrs. Ed. I dudits, or the village idiot, whichever one you prefer. Let's see. All right, it is I, the head chairperson of the Soccer Moms of Carroll County Coalition. I know you all have been wondering where I've been. Well, I went to the Wise in Westminster, the Wise, and an escort approached me, I was going there to buy some milk, and maybe like the five to twenty-dollar range. Started going on about her four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar bobcat that she just bought from like overseas in Thailand or something. Says she wanted to stop by, says she'd knock first, so anyways, like five in the morning, she leaves in her brand-new Ford truck. A few hours later, I'm in the hospital with pneumococcal pneumonia. And to make matters worse, while I'm recovering from pneumococcal pneumonia, I'm sitting, laying in bed, looking out the window, I watch my cat. I don't know if you guys have ever seen a cat fall with its legs and feet up in the air, backwards, the cat's back fell on a tree branch. I took it to the vet a few days later. Turns out it contracted a rare form of spina bifida. But moving to why I'm here, when I was a kid, my mom used to always tell me, when I was born, she expected me to be born with special needs. So before she had me, before she, I came out, you know, she made all the preparations and stuff. So I kind of dismissed the thought, and then years later, like around eighteen-ish, I started smoking a lot of crack. And that's how I got my yellow tooth right here. Little too much heat on that nerve, and something still angered. Then some time passed, and I, I did a lot of heroin, right? So that's why I'm missing a lot of the veins in my arms. And still, something persisted. So more time passes, and of course, you know, I mentioned to you all about my bid wanting to run for president, and it finally hit me. I was like, I had to ask myself one question, and that is, can I invent the internet? And that's when I realized I am special needs. So that is why I formed my organization, Donkey Lives Matter, DLM. And I am gonna kindly request that this board consider donating to my cause, our head chairperson. So yes, it is I. I am Don Quijones, and this is the Marshal of the Penguin. And, yeah. So I don't want the cameraman. The cameraman turned off my Penguin the last time I was here. Had a little bit more to say, of course, I ran a little short, I never time out my speeches, but just want to let everybody know this message has been fully funded and sponsored by Governor Less's more, touting his credentials and making sure he gets the perfect camera angle on his upper lip, one press conference at a time. a time. Thank you. Please donate to my cause.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have. I don't know if Chris has any.
Do we have anyone on the phone?
I have no one on the line.
Okay. We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing and leave the record open for 10 days.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Keep your emails coming, and... Our next item is grant approval to accept funding from the Carroll Community College Foundation. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners. We are here... Excuse me. I'm Patty Davis, Vice President, Ministry of Services at Carroll Community College, and I want to thank you for the time today, and that we are here today on behalf of Carroll Community College and the Carroll Community College Foundation, and to ask for the Commissioners' approval to accept a maximum of $3.2 million for the turf field project. The college is referring to it as the Dr. James Ball Athletic Complex, and this is in addition to the county commitment of the $2.4 million funds that was committed to in 2023. The county funds will be utilized first in all the project expenses, and the foundation funds will be used to serve as a secondary fund as well. And this is based on a letter of commitment from the Carroll Community College Foundation.
I move the Board of County Commissioners to accept funding from Carroll Community College Foundation.
Second.
All second it together.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another grant approved to submit and accept the award of Family Self-Sufficient Program.
Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon.
I'm joined again with our leadership team from the Division of Carroll County Housing and Community Connections, Danielle Yates, as you may recall, our division manager, and then Paul Moffett, our housing manager. As you noted, we are seeking approval to submit the FY25 Family Self-Sufficiency Grant and renew the application and accept the award. Our Family Self-Sufficiency Program, also known as Thrive, enables HUD-assisted families to increase earned income and reduce dependency on welfare assistance and rental subsidies. The FSS program was established in 1996 as a complementary program to help lift people out of poverty while encouraging independence. I'm going to turn it over to Danielle, who's going to provide us with some of the detail of the program and how people can enroll in the program.
Sure. So, good afternoon. The Family Self-Sufficiency Program is a voluntary program that is offered to all participants of the Housing Choice Voucher Program. The Family Self-Sufficiency Program Coordinator works with participants to create individual goals that focus on each family's separate needs. Through community partnerships that we have formed, the Family Self-Sufficiency Program Coordinator is able to link individuals to services that will assist them in attaining their goals for becoming more economically self-sufficient. Our agency has created strong partnerships with other county agencies such as Workforce Development, Human Services Program of Carroll County, DHS, the Health Department, United Way, Carroll Community College, Carroll County Youth Service Bureau, Potomac Case Management, and many others. Historically, 80% to 85% of the participants of the FSS program will attend college or some sort of vocational training. In this year's NOFA process, we are qualifying for $111,194.05 in funding that will support the FSS coordinator position. This is pending HUD's review of all applications. This is an increase from last year, where we received $108,482. What I'd like to do now is turn it over to Paul Moffett, our program manager, who would like to share an impact statement from one of our graduates in this year's program.
Hello. So...
If I may, I think we're probably all in agreement on this. I have no objection to this, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the submission of the FY25 Family Self-Sufficiency Grant Renewal Application and Accept the Award.
Second.
Sorry, but I...
No, that's okay. I was going to sing at the end.
We respect and appreciate.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make a suggestion, because we are pressed for time this afternoon. I'd like to take item number nine, the Discussion of Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance, and shift that to next week.
Is that a motion?
Motion to shift this to next week.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to entertain a motion that item 10 through 15 are relatively straightforward. I would like somebody to make a motion that we accept all of those, and I know we're going to lose a quorum here in a minute if we don't, so are you guys okay with that?
To consolidate them into one consent item?
Yep.
What numbers is it?
10 through 15.
So basically 10 through the end.
Yep, 10 through 15.
All good? I'll make a motion to condense all items from 10 to 15 and vote to... A motion to approve all of them.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You in favor?
Yeah, I shouldn't have... Maybe I shouldn't have locked myself out.
I don't want to put you on the spot.
You can get on the record. Come on.
We just did... We just finished item 15, so do we have any public comment? Admin, open. We have closed minutes for legal.
How long was I gone?
Motion to approve closed minutes for legal from October 9, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'd like one more motion, and either way, I'll live, that we waive the agenda review.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.